I'd like not having that sound.
All right, we're gonna call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for March 4th, 2024. Can we please have a roll call, Tabitha?
Mary Ann?
Here.
Commissioner Tetrick?
Here.
Commissioner Schriven?
Here.
Commissioner Leachman?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Present.
For our vacation tonight, we have Pastor Debbie McClure in Asbury Church. Please come up.
Good evening. Let's pray. Father, I'm truly grateful for the beautiful weather today and for all of your love and care for us. I pray just now that you will be in this city commission meeting, that you will give them discernment and direction and give them all that they need to guide the city. And we thank you how you have blessed this city in many ways. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a proclamation tonight. Whereas the severe weather and tornado season in Kansas has always been known as a potentially dangerous time, historically producing property damage, injuries, and even loss of life. And whereas since 1990, the National Weather Service has issued over 1,000 severe thunderstorm warnings and more than 90 tornado warnings for Butler County, these included the storms that produced the deadly 1991 F-5 tornado and the destructive 2022 EF3 tornado that impacted the city of Andover and rural Butler County. Whereas everyone is potentially at risk during severe weather and tornado season, which reaches its peak in Kansas between March and June. And whereas the National Weather Service, in conjunction with the state of Kansas and local jurisdictions, will be conducting a statewide tornado drill on Wednesday, March 6th at 11:00 a.m. And whereas the purpose of severe weather preparedness week is to heighten the public's understanding of the dangers associated with severe weather and tornadoes, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Bill Young, proclaim the week of March 4th through March 8th, 2024, in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, as severe weather preparedness week. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand that caused the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed on the fourth day of March, 2024. So Wednesday is statewide tornado drill? So that's why we should hear the sirens, Wednesday at 11:00. I'm certain we'll still get calls at the city as to why we're hearing sirens, but...
They are going to be tested today and everything will run into their going to do the battery test on Wednesday. If they don't go off, please let us know.
Yeah.
If their batteries aren't working.
I heard mine today.
Next on the agenda is personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling city clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5 o'clock p.m. the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. And tonight, we have here to present the excess sales tax recommendations.
Well, I didn't call ahead of time. I was nominated to come. Anyway, I'm Ashley Jack, 1410 Shell Corp., and I was nominated by Commissioner Schriven to serve on the Excessive Sales Tax Committee, and it was a pleasure. I'm here this evening to present to you our recommendations. But first, I want to thank all the El Dorado citizens who volunteered their time to serve on this committee. We met a total of about three times. I think it was three times that we met, great conversations, and focused in on what we needed to do. I'd also like to thank Tabitha for leading us through the process and answering all our questions along with the city manager. I appreciate you being present. And I also want to say thank you to the city officials who are always present to present to us and answer questions in regards to the projects that were being presented to us, because I knew that that took time out of their busy schedule. But they are always present in answering our questions. I also want to thank Commissioner Wilkerson and Commissioner Tetrick for being present to listen. Hopefully, it wasn't too bad. In fact, hopefully, you found it entertaining at times, our conversations that we had. So anyway, with that being said, I was nominated by the committee to come present the findings. These are not my findings. These are the recommendations coming forward from the Excess Sales Tax Committee. We were presented with 18 proposed projects, and those proposed projects, I'm probably not gonna go in the order of her presentation, so she'll probably kind of play with me here. But anyway, those proposed projects that were presented to us were a little over $2.4 million. Coming into this as a committee, we knew we had a little over $1.5 million. In fact, we had $1,550,932 in total excess sales tax. And so what we did was we listened to the proposed project presentations, and then we had lots of conversation. And as a committee, what we really looked at is we had conversation around, what do we believe was going to increase the quality of life for our citizens here in El Dorado? So as we looked at projects, we looked at those, that particular criteria. We also looked at what was gonna have positive impact for a majority of the El Dorado residents, as well as what was going to have visible impact. We felt like visible impact was important as well for our El Dorado residents. And then most certainly, looking at safety of our El Dorado residents and which of these products, projects would add to the safety of everyone living here. So those were really probably the four main criteria in regards to our discussion as we looked at each one of these. From that, I think you want to talk a little bit about the ballpark dollars that you have on that slide, the second or the third slide. Do you want to talk about that? You know more about that than I do.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, we had $1,550,932 available after removing the ball field projects from the totals. We, if you remember, the ball field project was approved a couple of years ago, and each year gets an amount. So right now, we're looking at an estimated total of $2,230,000 for the ball field projects. They receive, they will receive $600,000 again this year. And then right now, we're estimated to give them another million over the next two years. We'll see what they need and either come back or maybe be able to give some back. I'm not looking, look at maybe, I don't know, everything's coming down higher. So then we're going to...
Yeah. Oh, you want to go back to that? I'll talk a little bit about that so that they understand. So as we listen to the projects, I want you to know that this was the list that was presented to us. These projects are listed in the order of the survey rankings, and we were aware that there were 410 survey responses from the citizens of El Dorado. And this was the order that they were ranked in based upon those survey results. We also had a few anecdotal notes or qualitative notes that were provided to us that we did, we did look at what those citizens had to say in regards to their comments. So based upon this list of 18 proposed projects, like I said, each of the city officials came forward with their presentations. It also gave us an opportunity to answer questions. And going back to the fact that a lot of questions were focused in on safety, visible, visible impact, positive impact, and how would that increase the quality of life for the El Dorado residents? And so based upon that, we as an Excess Sales Tax Committee actually accepted these 14 projects that are in front of us. But I do want to make a note that you'll notice that the police drone and the downtown speaker system were two of them that we added some extra dollars to, and I want to explain that a little bit. Now, I might be guilty of the one getting nominated, because I happen to be the one that had the calculator out as we were going through these, kind of talking about the proposed projects. So when we actually accepted the 14 proposed projects, we were at a little over $1.3 million. So we started to have questions, our conversation into, with that excess, what, is there something else within this project list that we'd want to do? And really, there was a lot of conversation around the downtown speaker system, because the $45,000 proposal that was put in front of us only allowed that to go in kind of a, I know I'm not gonna do this justice, but kind of like a four-block area. And really, through that conversation, there was a lot of conversation about, how could we expand that beyond that area to cover a bigger area? So that's where we decided to add an additional $45,000 to this project so that that speaker system could be expanded in and have a larger impact. The second piece that we added additional money to was the police drone. They were asking for one police drone, and we felt it was important to have two for a variety of reasons. One of the main reasons is, is what if there was two situations going on where there was two police drones that needed to be utilized? As well as maybe within one situation, two police drones going in different directions? But also, what happens if one police drone is down, right? It's kind of like having a police car down. You gotta have a backup system. So we felt like it was important to add money to that. So after adding those two additional, which was a little over $60,000, that put us at $1.4 million. And we had conversation of, you know, what do we do with that additional $125,000? And as we looked at the downtown street skate project, we understood that what was proposed in front of us was the flower beds or the flower containers that were in the front, and we had a lot of conversation. But then there was conversation of, well, if we're gonna do that, why are we not adding to that alleyway that runs along, I want to say, basically the...
By the old Graves.
Huh?
By the old Graves.
By the old Graves drugstore, but you know, runs by the museum area and through there. So we felt like it was important to put some money towards that, because if we're gonna draw people downtown with the speaker systems and do more things downtown, we've got to make downtown look great. So these are our 14 projects that we came forward with, plus the additional money and where we allocated it.
Perfect. Do you guys have any questions, Ashley? Well, I want to say I appreciate the time and effort that you all put in on this. It's, there were a lot of projects in front of you, a lot of information to digest. And my understanding is that you all had some pretty spirited discussions. It would have been great to be a fly on the wall maybe at some of those. But thank you for all the work you guys did, and thank you for showing up tonight since you were voluntold to be here, so.
Yes, very much so. Yep.
Appreciate you.
Uh-huh. Take care.
Okay, we don't have any other personal appearances, so we're gonna move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only. No action will be taken. Do we have anyone here who'd like to make public comment? Come on up.
Might be kind of an unusual request. I'd like permission to raise quail, or not raise quail, but have quail for eggs. I started looking into it about a year ago due to severe allergies with my kids. One can't have chicken eggs, and the other one can't have anything from the store because of his allergen being used to pasteurize the eggs. And we kind of put it off, and we're like, oh, we'll do that later. It's kind of a bit much right now. And this winter, we lost his safe source of eggs. So he has literally no safe source of protein at all right now. So I had called a year ago to see if quail were permitted, because there wasn't really anything in like the municipal code or anything that specified if quail was permitted or not, and was told I'd have to come before the council and ask for permission. They don't free range like chickens do. They would stay in a cage. We're looking at like, we'd need around 12 for what we would need like for a week, because like three quail eggs equal one chicken egg. So I don't know if we'd have to have like a license since it's more than four animals. But yeah, that's kind of what we're, what I'm asking is, can I have quail?
Yeah, so I don't know the answer to that. What I would ask David to do is is get some information put together and get it to us as soon as possible so we can figure this out and help them out however we can, so. Yeah, so I would, I would expect we'll, we'll get some information from staff so that we're well-versed on what we need, what we're talking about here. And then once we get it kind of figured out, staff will get back ahold of you. If you could leave your contact information with Tabitha, I'd appreciate that. And we'll go from there. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, quail eggs would not be very big.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the city commission, approval of the city commission meeting minutes from February 19th, 2024, and approval of a temporary cereal malt beverage license for Butler Community College on March 29th, 2024, to expire at 11:00 p.m. on that same day. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's no old business, so we'll move on to, we've got two items and new business. The first is a consideration of the request to set the public hearings to consider the demolition of dilapidated homes at 434 West Cave Springs Avenue, 1108 Sheldon Street, 308 North Taylor Street, 724 North Topeka Street, 616 West Tuanda Avenue, 817 North Washington Street, and 619 North Taylor Street. Scott?
Yes, Commissioner, before you tonight is an ordinance which sets a public hearing. Notification will go out to those property owners of these structures. It is for the ultimate either abatement of the hazard, the dangerous situation, or the ordering of demolition at that public hearing. Prior to the public hearing, we will make contact with these property owners and discuss what will occur at the public hearing. We'll come back to you with that information. Property owners will be notified of the public hearing. They can make themselves present. But these are structures you can see within your packet that have a history by various citations and issues. So we're bringing them to you tonight so you can start that process and hold that all the time.
Why, why two and a half months before a public hearing?
Just as our experience in the past, once they get notified and they start talking to us and bring contractors on, and you're aware, some of these have gotten resolved. And so that gives them a little time to get their stuff in order. We could definitely, that date's up there. If the city commission wants to set it, the first meeting in, what would that be, April, you know, we could do that if that's your discretion.
Well, no, I mean, I just, two and a half months, I didn't think it'd been that long in the past before. But you also have more properties than we've had in the past.
Yeah, there's quite a few properties on this.
Yeah.
How long have you been dealing with these guys, Scott? What would you say the average is? Or can you look at it like that?
The average?
In other words, you've sent state, you look at the stuff, you've sent butters out, you've sent this out, you've sent that out.
And that's all, you know, what code enforcement's involved with. Some of those dates on there may be things as like a mowing violation or debris in the yard versus some of them get a little more concerning the structure. So you know, some of them do a few years in the works and some of them less.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the scheduling of a public hearing on May 20th, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. to abate or remove dangerous structures located at 434 West Cave Springs Avenue, 1108 Sheldon Street, 308 North Taylor, 724 North Taylor, 616 West Tuanda, and 817 North Washington.
So seven, just a quick correction, 724 North Topeka?
Yeah.
Sorry, 704 North Topeka.
I second that. Would that change?
And was, I don't have the motion in front of me, was 619 North Taylor in the motion?
No.
No.
No, it was 308 North Taylor.
That's fine.
There is no 619.
Oh, that's fine. It was in the, it was in the agenda item, but not in the motion.
619 is good to handle outside.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions for Scott? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Agenda item number 11, consideration to accept a bid of $699,655.55 for APAC Kansas Inc. and award a contract for the resurfacing of North Main Street from Sixth Avenue to McCollum Road?
Yes, the city of El Dorado was successful in getting a C-CLIP grant from the Kansas Department of Transportation for the mill and overlay of North Main, as you mentioned, from Sixth Avenue, North McCollum. Bids were received on this project. We had two bidders. The low bid being APAC Kansas of $699,655. I'm sorry, messed that up. $699,655.55. K-Dots will provide $400,000 to the funding of this project. The remaining will come from the city of El Dorado via street sales tax dollars we received.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion. I move that since APAC Kansas Inc. has submitted the lowest and best bid of $699,655.55 for project number 610, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Second.
Motion is second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to, there's nothing for discussion items, so we'll move on to city commission advisory board updates, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Wilkinson.
We had a Main Street meeting, and we were all given copies of the self-assessment that was done. And that way, the individual members could all read what was going on. We were presented with a budget done by Maestro. Basically, they plug in the numbers, and Maestro is the software utilized by the state Main Street, and it created the budget for us. They've been kind of relying on Excel to do it, and now that they have the Maestro software, they'll be using that. Emily also had a big corp board of the historic district and pointed out the, I believe there were six different projects that are in the process of being helped by Main Street. And she quickly explained what they all were to kind of give us an idea of exactly what projects they were working on and giving help to. They spent some time talking about business plans for businesses that come to them saying that they need help. They're interested, and of course, they have no idea what a business plan is. So Main Street is offering assistance in doing that. And I had to walk out early, so I don't know what happened the last 15 minutes. Oh, and even though Parks and Rec has not met, they need, is it umpires?
Yes, ma'am.
We need umpires. Anybody who wants to spend their summer evenings.
We did meet.
Out, oh, you did meet? Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I stepped on your toe.
Oh, you're all right. You're all right. No problem.
I have nothing.
Thanks, Ms. Leachman. We did meet for Parks and Rec on Wednesday, February 21st. It was a good meeting. The interesting thing I found as we looked through the people of, for example, baseball, softball, and soccer, what's coming up, they were down a total of 351 people if I'm reading my notes correctly. What was kind of interesting with that to me was is, as you look at this, just get a feel for where these kids, what's going on, what's down, what's happening. Lot of things going on. The interesting thing that I think too they're looking at is like a turf cleaning machine. They're trying to see if they can do something there to help clean the AstroTurf and the other things that we have, well, maybe that's not the proper term. But anyway, the turf, like out here at the McDonald's Stadium and anywhere else it might be, they gave a report also on the McDonald's Stadium, where it was on the grill softball, and just a lot of good things going on. They got their hands wrapped around a lot of stuff.
Did you say, did you say we're down 300?
Well, let's see. Does that sound right to you? No.
We had 351.
Oh, okay, we had, we were down six.
Down six, okay.
Okay, I guess I'll have to learn to take better notes and read.
That's all right. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, they were down, and we're, I guess they had so many, they had a few down in, well, it was in the baseball, softball, I think mostly. But they also run into the quandary of like soccer, you know, it can be a two-tier sport at different times. And so you get a problem with kids wanting to play one, and then maybe trying to play both of them. It's hard. So, sorry for the mix-up. I hope you didn't have a heart attack back there.
I about did, so.
Okay.
Mr. Schriven?
We met, but I was not able to make it, so I don't have anything.
All right.
Library board was supposed to meet this coming Monday, but we're not gonna have a meeting. They didn't have nothing to talk about. They did give you furniture at the library if you're around there.
Fantastic.
It's pretty nice.
EFABC, we will meet Wednesday. I think we'll be meeting monthly for the next couple of months here while we move through some projects and the specific turf stuff. We'll have an update at the next, the next commission meeting. That's really all I have. City managers report.
They held a walkthrough for the concession western facilities at both East and, well, not yet Central, but East Park. Contractor has just a few things to finish up, and then that facility will be pretty much good to go. And I believe that also includes the locker facility. There were a few items to note that the contractor needed to address. Handwashing bases not yet been quite installed or completed because of the temperatures, but now that that will be changing, they expect that to be done the next few days. They are still waiting on approval for the bat design that'll go on the outside of the mail containers. And once that's done and approved, then they'll be getting that lined up for installation. Let's see, then the Central Avenue water project is currently out for bid. The opening bid will take place on March 26th at 10:00 a.m., so then it will be open the next city commission meeting after that. The Taster Group project is also out to bid, and I think that's gonna be open about the same time. Scott, do you have that date in mind?
We're a little delayed on that right now. It, there's an easement we need to acquire as part of that, but it'll be out soon enough. The projects finalize, permits are in place. There's a, there's a small chunk of easement we need to acquire among the traffic lanes. I will wrap that up and let us get that up for advertising.
EFABC received three quotes from turf and track vendors ranging from $930,000-ish to about $1.2 million. It will be presented to the EFABC so they can kind of decide what they're gonna do next. But once that's completed, we will begin conversations with the two, the other two entities with respect to the turf machine for the financing. And then once that's completed, we'll break right now to you all for consideration. We've already met with bond counsel and financial advisor to kind of talk about what those structures might look like in terms of bonds and how that might look. So really, we're waiting on that piece from the cost standpoint, and then we're gonna negotiate with the other entities with respect to a couple of items, and we'll be good to go on that piece. You may have, well, our water billing has kind of had a couple of challenges recently, so I thought I'd just talk about that very briefly, because I'm sure people are out there kind of wondering what's going on. First thing that happened was we changed the cycle so that we got everybody on the same cycle. We had two cycles. Now we're migrating that to there's only gonna be one cycle. And part of that is because of the automated metering. It makes sense to just put everybody on the same cycle. The second challenge that has kind of led to this is our meter reading operation. As you all know, we had one of our meter readers was hit by a car in a construction site, on a construction site, and so we were down one. We had been bringing in other people from the department to do meter reading, but because of water leaks in those situations, they weren't able to do that as consistently as we would have liked. And so we had one meter reader going through the system and doing that, but because of how many meters... how many meters have to be read, uh, per each, uh, well, per each zone, uh, we get behind and somebody get behind, it's difficult to catch back up without, you know, it's just kind of a perfect storm. And then third, or fourth, third, I'm sorry, third is we've had some, we've also had some issues with the printing of the bills and then actually getting them to the mail so they can be mailed, and then we've got some challenges with the post office, again, perfect storm. Nonetheless, we are working through those problems as much as we can, uh, and hope to have them addressed very quickly. Uh, what we've had to do unfortunately is we've had to average a lot of these meters or accounts as we have inadequate data. Uh, and so people may have, they may see that one bill is higher than the last bill or that it's less than, and so there's corrections. So over a period of time, that would be corrected, um, and by averaging it, you're going to be paying an excess amount more than what you would normally pay, um, but it is an imperfect system and it's something that we are trying to get through as quickly as we can. And then of course this summer, we're going to be implementing the new meters, and so that will kind of eradicate all of these problems because we don't have meter readers. Uh, we won't rely on, um, changes in cycle because that would be done, so, so that stuff will be kept in care of. Uh, we are looking at options for kind of addressing the mailing situation, but some of that's, that's a problem as well with UPS and things like USPS. Um, so I think that's all I have for now.
You have any questions for David?
Well, the last thing I would say is that as the weather gets nicer, make sure we can, you can pick up two free, pick up those of trash at, uh, city hall. We have to do show, uh, ID and get two, two free coupons. And it's basically our spring cleanup. You can basically take anything to the dump that you've normally put in the spring cleanup. Um, no refrigeration units, hazardous materials, or tires, and, uh, that's basically it. You can take those down and clean up.
So when does our dump truck program restart for the summer? I mean, I know we wait till the weather is certainly cleared up.
Yeah, so I believe that that program has started now.
It's March first or April, I think, I don't know what time it is.
Yeah, coming soon. So you go to rent, rent a dump truck and then whatever you can fit in back of that and take it away.
Okay, yeah, that's somebody else.
I used my deal for the, uh, trash here last year. It was a good deal.
The biggest?
Yep. Wish for a sweet.
All right, if there's no other business, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
I would be adjourned.
Couple, couple of motions in a second. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.